Our offices at early so that Portland.
Traffic doesn't kill you.
Traffic doesn't kill us.
Yeah.
Because it's such a huge difference between leaving right at five and like ten after or five after five.
Good.
See, if I leave right at five, it's, it takes me longer to get here than if I waited.
Yeah.
Which is weird.
When I go in, I'll go in like ten minutes to eight.
Thank God your air conditioning works.
Or like five after.
But if you leave.
If I leave at seven thirty, I'll get there eight o'clock, five after.
No air conditioning.
It's the kiss of death physically, yeah.
Had it my car, dashing back aggression at five thirty.
Too late, us when we go, twenty minutes.
Glad you're not living on a ice coast.
Yeah. First, no, no.
So when?
You wish you had it.
That's next Thursday.
It started raining in Colorado.
Oh, they August.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Where's?
Bonnie told me she wanted to.
Hey, usually they create enough for their own, most of the weather that they create their own grain pattern, but there's not any moisture in the air for it.
Clumsy, sympathy, sympathy, yes, them too, they're sympathetic. And I have the whole list almost memorized.
Have you done any of that? Are you ready? Are we messing up?
We're stalling for some.
Okay, are we stalling?
Yeah.
Tony, are we set to go?
We'll give it a shot and see how it goes. The applicant's representative was down in Cambie and was gonna be cutting it very close.
Tony said if the applicant isn't here, that he'll get up and do a little song and dance for us.
Well, I thought that was a collective thing.
Oh, collect, we'll all do that.
I can, I could practice one of my Toastmasters speeches, you know, I would do a five, we can do a two to five minute table topics, which is, we'll pick something randomly and then you have to be extemporaneous.
Back it off the back end of the meeting then.
Okay, we can do it.
All right. The Planning Commission hearing meeting for July ninth, two thousand twelve is called to order. Are there any public comments for items not listed on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Tony, you want to go ahead and give us an update first before we get started?
Mr. Price is here.
They are here, so we're good to go.
Okay, great. So I will go ahead and read the script. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out by state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedures are shown on the chart on the wall, which we'll follow this evening. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please bring all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written material received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing will be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits to be used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to the staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow local government or to designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So we will start the record, open the record for the annexation of eleven point nine three acres at nineteen three fourteen Beaver Creek, which is AN twelve dash zero three. Thank you very much, Chair Kidwell.
Hold on.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, yes, that's correct. Does anyone have any ex parte contact to declare on this application?
I've driven past the site going to and from the high school and that's the extent of it.
I have driven past the site and I'm aware of the location of the site.
And I drive by as well with kids in high school and all that sort of thing.
I have not driven by recently, but I know exactly where it is, so.
Are there any questions from the audience regarding these declarations? Seeing none.
And then just to clarify, no conflicts of interest or any other problems?
None.
Okay, Pete?
Good, thank you. Just for the record, Jennifer Breger is our deputy city attorney here. She doesn't have a name tag, but we'll sort that out fairly soon. Thank you, Chair Kidwell, good evening, everybody, planning commissioners. Annexation file AN twelve dash zero three comprises eleven point nine acres on the east side of Beaver Creek Road. The address is one nine three one four, south beneath the Creek Road, directly across from Claremont Drive, which is the entrance into the Clackamas Community College. The title slide I've got here is a tax map, shows the property. It's a very large flag lot shaped property where the pole of the property touches Beaver Creek Road. Approximately a hundred feet of the property touches Beaver Creek Road in that location. It's approximately seven hundred and fifty feet deep in the back. Large Bonneville Power Administration easement crossing the property from east to west on the south side of the property. The annexation was submitted by the applicant's representative, Robert Price, Portland, Oregon, who's here with us tonight. And the owner is the Norma Hawkehalter Trust, represented by Kenneth Hawkehalter, who's also here with us tonight. This property has an Oregon City Comprehensive Plan designation of I Industrial and it's currently zoned in Clackamas County as future urbanizable. The county comprehensive plan designates it as I Industrial. It's one tax lot of approximately eleven point nine acres. Currently is one house with some outbuildings on the site. It slopes gently to the east from Beaver Creek Road. There are no wetlands or water resources on the site. Directly accessed Beaver Creek Road. And as far as public utilities, consists of a public sewer line approximately four hundred and eighty-five feet to the north, which would require a twelve inch line extension at least to get to that public sewer. City water and county storm sewer facilities are currently available in Beaver Creek Road and these would need to be upgraded with development of the site. As I said, it has a comprehensive plan designation of I Industrial and has had that I Industrial designation for quite some time. It's not designated as a future urban property on the city's map because it was in the urban growth boundary prior to two thousand and two. Was actually brought into the UGB in nineteen seventy-nine and in nineteen eighty. Subsequently, the property does not need to wait for the adoption of the Beaver Creek Road concept plan in order to facilitate development of the site. It was considered during the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan process as one of the properties. However, that Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan has not been adopted yet. It was a subject of a Luba appeal and was remanded to the city for further revisions. So until the city adopts that plan, we would not apply any other zoning to the property other than campus industrial designation, which is the default zoning for an I Industrial Comprehensive Plan designation. The applicant has submitted a detailed annexation petition, which includes the standard responses to chapter fourteen, annexation factors. They also addressed the transportation planning rule required by the state and submitted a traffic study and a memorandum based on a campus industrial type zoning. Now, this traffic study is not detailed enough to, for a site plan and design review application. This is a, this is a quick and dirty TPR analysis based on an assumption of total square footage under a office or a light office manufacturing type designation. And that traffic study was submitted by Lancaster Engineering. Todd Mobley is the engineer. They estimated that peak trips, that the traffic would be generated about two hundred and ninety-two trips per day from that property. And as I said, if the property is brought into the city and the voters approve the annexation, it would subsequently receive a campus industrial zoning designation. And no development is proposed at this time. The development of the property would be subject to either a master plan process, which would allow phased development of the property, or a site plan and design review application. This is an aerial photograph of the property that is in the packet that was sent out. As you can see from the aerial photograph, which is a two thousand and eleven aerial photo, the site's pretty much clear. You can see some under that yellow patch, I apologize for that. One of the towers for the power line easement, you can see very faintly the power lines crossing the property. You can see that the site is slightly wooded to the northeast corner. And apart from that, it's in agricultural use or has been, yes.
You said this was included in the packet, where was it?
Ah.
Because I looked.
Oh, okay, yeah, this is the vicinity map from the public notice, which was sent out, which is a three hundred foot mailed notice, which may not have been in your packet, but it was part of the file for the annexation.
Okay, because the line drawing tax lot thing, you couldn't even identify Beaver Creek Road from it, so ended up doing the good old OC web maps to find the same thing, but.
Yeah.
So I'd appreciate it that we make sure that a clear map gets in our packet.
Okay, yeah. There are a lot of exhibits in this application. There's some that include aerial photos and some that don't, but this one's generated from the city's aerial photograph.
Right.
This is a zoning report for the property showing the adjacent city zoning. Property above several properties that already have a campus industrial zone in the city to the north and to the south. So the factors for approval of an annexation that are contained in the Oregon City Municipal Code in chapter fourteen that the city commission must consider when looking at annexations include adequacy of access to the site, conformity of the proposal with the city's comprehensive plan, adequacy and availability of public facilities and services to service potential development, compliance with the applicable sections of the Oregon Revised Statutes two twenty-two and Metro Code three oh nine, any natural hazards identified by the city, such as wetlands, floodplains, and steep slopes, any significant adverse effects on specially designated open space, scenic, historic, or natural resource areas due to urbanization of the subject property at the time of annexation, and lack of any significant adverse effects on the economic, social, and physical environment of the community by the overall impact of the annexation. And in order to send an annexation forward to the voters for final approval, the city commission must find that the annexation is consistent with a positive balance of these seven factors. The staff report contains detailed findings with respect to each of those seven factors and we have determined that they are adequately considered and met. We therefore recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the requested annexation to the city commission for their consideration at the August first, two thousand and twelve city commission meeting. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I may have skipped over in my staff report.
Are there questions for the staff?
Denise?
Was there a follow-up from the Neighborhood Association?
Yeah.
The law said that they were going to be presenting it at their June twenty-sixth meeting and I didn't see anything else in the packet.
Oh, yeah, I didn't get anything back from the Neighborhood Association with respect to that meeting.
It's right there.
But they were apprised of the public hearing date so, because we emailed it out to them and they were, they had already met with the applicant prior to the submittal of the, of the application, with the executive committee of the Caulfield Neighborhood Association in order to let them know about the annexation. And the executive committee's letter is in the, is in the record stating that they're going to present the application to the full Caulfield Neighborhood Association at the subsequent meeting. And to date, I haven't heard back from them with respect to that. But the executive committee of the Caulfield Neighborhood Association is authorized to discuss land use applications, according to Larry Hanlon, their chair, outside of that, in order to meet their Neighborhood Association meeting obligation under our code.
So my question still remains, you did not hear anything back from them? This letter just says we're going to present it. It doesn't really provide us with any substantive information with regard to what their opinion is, other than once somebody expressed a question.
Right, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for the staff?
Can you go back to the zoning map, like two back or whatever it was? Yeah, that one.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the purple zones are already annexed in or they're?
Correct.
Okay, so this would connect to two zones. I mean, they're already connected because of the light blue, which is already industrial and in the city.
Right.
So this would just close the gap.
Yeah, this map shows the red line here, which is slightly covered by this dotted yellow line, but that is the city limit line. And then this purple line up here is the urban growth boundary.
Right, so this would close that gap.
Yeah, it would be a fully contiguous annexation. The new city limit line upon Metro completing the mapping would, would follow the outside of this perimeter here. Yeah, thanks, yep.
Bob?
Is there, to the north, you say four hundred and eighty-five feet, there's existing sewer water?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so they would access that by going through, what, private property or?
Well, they'd need to chase the grade down Beaver Creek Road.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Pete, you mentioned that the Beaver Creek Concept Plan was currently under appeal by Luba.
Well, that appeal has ended and has been resolved at the state level. It's been accepted by, sorry.
So is any part of that comprehensive plan implemented on any of the parcels out there now?
No, so what happened was Beaver Creek Concept Plan was appealed to Luba, Luba remanded it. We worked with Metro to amend the twenty forty growth concept plan map. And as part of the Metro Urban Growth Boundary expansions that just went through last year, our, the map amendments and other minor amendments were all included and they did it as one large ordinance instead of breaking each one of them out separately. And so that decision by Metro is still being reviewed by the state. So we're, we're kind of in that process. We're in that larger UGB discussion right now. And so until that's finalized, once that's finalized, we will come back and re-adopt the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. So at this point, no, nothing from the Beaver Creek Concept Plan has been adopted.
So then if the, if the concept plan is adopted for this, or for that area, would it retroactively, retroactively apply to this property or would it be exempt?
It would be, it would be similar to if we went in and changed our zoning code next year. What's, what's adopted at the time of the application is what's, what would be applicable to the, to the actual site plan design review or current development proposal. So it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily retroactive, it would be, whatever is in place on the date they submit for a development application is what they're entitled to.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I'm leading to is that, you know, is this annexation, you know, ripe or timely for, you know, the ramp up of the adoption of those plans and the implementation of those plans for that area? You know, you just hate to have that property, you know, lose that opportunity for, you know, the, to have that plan apply to all the properties out there instead of having a kind of a incongruous pattern out there.
And not that it's, you know, it's, since the Beaver Creek Concept Plan's not adopted, it's really, it's not applicable in terms of a land use decision making. What I would say is that everything in that area is, was proposed to be North Employment Campus, which is very similar to campus industrial zoning. So there are some similarities in the types of uses that are potentially going to be out there, but we are missing some of the other long range planning that went into that area. But, so it's not like it's proposed to be something completely different. But once again, it's.
There's different design criteria and that sort of thing.
You haven't even gotten that far yet.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't write the zoning, we were still at the comp plan, comprehensive plan level.
Right, okay.
Just another follow-up question with that regard, as it stands now. These properties that are designated as CI, and if this were to be joined into the CI designation, would that be consistent with the comprehensive plan, the Beaver Creek Comprehensive Plan, if it were adopted as is today?
Once, we didn't, we didn't get into the specific zoning, writing the specific zoning language yet, or, you know, were we going to be able to use the existing industrial comprehensive plan designation? Probably, or do we have to create another one? We just, we didn't write the, the implementation zoning yet, so I don't specifically have an answer for that yet.
Any other questions for staff?
Just one more. We continually run up against this brick wall involving the transportation. So we're not any further than we were before with the, we've had, let me bring, let me say this back up. Commissioner Stein had brought up several, on several occasions, that we were not adequately meeting the transportation planning rule through the process that we're doing these annexations in. And it was, as I recall, it was somewhat controversial. So we've had, what, two or three since that time? And this would probably be the third or the fourth one? So we're still in that same quagmire?
Something's happened between last year and this year. You know, the transportation planning rule has been amended to recognize that properties that were consistent with an adopted transportation system plan at the time and had a comprehensive plan designation at the time that the city's transportation system plan was, was adopted are, and if they are, have not been subject to any changes since then, are consistent with the transportation planning rule, or assumed to be that way. So what the applicant did was withdrew a prior application because they had submitted this application in two thousand and eleven, which was on hold.
Right.
Pending TPR compliance report. During that time, the TPR was amended and the applicant withdrew the application and resubmitted it under the new TPR rules. And Todd Mobley's memorandum with respect to that explains those three criteria and how they've been met. And ODOT has also acknowledged that this annexation is consistent with the new TPR compliance rules.
Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to say that was on the record.
Correct, thank you.
Nobody would come back and say, you know, you didn't do that and thank you.
Yeah, no, good question.
It was an acknowledgement that some of these properties have been in multiple transportation system plans. They've been accounted for. Your transportation system plan is compliant. So that's, it'd be different if it was lands that were added in the two thousand and two or two thousand and four UGB expansion that were never in a TSP.
Right.
Right, so that's, that's where the, one of the changes in the state requirements occurred.
Any other questions for staff?
I think I would just like to add just a couple of things real quick, just for clarification. You know, we ran into some, some confusion and, and it was partly due to the way we wrote our staff reports. You know, the, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city commission. And what we're looking at are the land use criteria. And then we have a separate charter requirement for it to go to a vote of the people. So what, what we're going to do and what I want to be clear about is that we're making a decision on the land use criteria of whether it meets, you know, on balance, a majority of the approval criteria. And you make a recommendation, whether that does or it does not, to the city commission for their consideration. And that's going to be, the city commission will then take that recommendation, they'll review it, and they'll make their determination. And that is going to be the land use decision. We're going to then, what we historically did is then we lumped in the, the date to put it on the ballot, which ballot it would be on. So it was confusing as to what they were approving through this process. So we're going to separate those two. So we're going to have a land use approval and then we'll have a separate resolution with the city commission, which isn't before you, you don't set dates for elections, that's the city commission's. So, but that is one thing where we are going to separate that out, just so it's clear that.
That's a very good idea.
There are two very separate decisions. One is the land use. If the land use is approved, we have a separate charter requirement that says we have to vote of the people.
So there's going to be like an A B decision, like three A B as an agenda item for?
It's going to be, well, it'll probably be a land use decision under a public hearing and then it'll be a resolution under general business.
That, that makes so much more sense because co-mingling them.
It got confusing.
Well, not only got confusing, but it, I think it was problematic. It was sort of like we were, you know, trying to mix a lemonade with lemons and some gasoline and it wasn't working because they are two separate decisions.
I think another thing, you know, we hear quite a bit in the staff report, we do have a comprehensive plan policy that talks about a goal is to come up with annexation plans for the city. We do not have annexation plans in the city. I think it's also important because there is some misunderstanding, why do we keep, why do these keep ending up on the ballot? You know, we've had the last couple of ones denied. And really, if, if it meets the land use approval criteria, if we find that it does at the city commission level, they have to send it to the, to the voters. You know, political will isn't a land use criteria. So I just want to try and clarify that it is a two-step process. You have a land use process and now you have a political voter process that enters into it in Oregon City. And the other part of that is, we're not, as a city, proactively out there annexing, asking people to annex, forcing people to annex. These annexation requests are property owner driven. They come to the city with that request. So that's just, just trying to clarify, since we've had quite a few of these and there's quite a bit of information out there about them as to how do these. and there's quite a bit of information out there about them as to how do these, how do these come forward? Why do they come forward? You know, why, why is the city pushing annexation in this horrible economy? And really, we're just, we're processing a request from a property owner.
So you're processing a request from a property owner for annexation?
Correct.
But you're asking us to apply a future land use of the property?
By our code, since this property's been in since 79, 80, it's had a comprehensive plan designation of industrial.
Been in.
Inside of our urban growth boundary. It's been in since 1979, 1980. And it's had, it's been designated industrial on our comprehensive plan map. And what our code says, if you're designated industrial, upon annexation, you automatically get zoned campus industrial. We have a two-map system with the comp plan and the zoning code. So it's a default zoning that, that happens if it is approved by the voters.
Are there any other questions for the staff at this time?
Not so much a question, but I, I reviewed the report by Lancaster Engineering and, you know, it's, it's the typical traffic study. I'm kind of surprised in a way that John Replinger, our representative, said that Beaver Creek Road would be adequate for the time being, but that later on, things would need to happen. I, I think Beaver Creek Road right now is probably at a level of service C or D if you look at the traffic. And I will readily admit that I do not traverse Beaver Creek Road in that particular area because of the traffic congestion. But it's, it's a personal choice. It's not because there's anything wrong or anything going on down there. It's just, it's always really kind of crowded. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to, you know, let's say in the future, it's fully developed. Obviously Beaver Creek Road is going to need some other improvements. It's just wow.
I think the Lancaster report mentions the need for a couple of additional lanes on Beaver Creek Road. And that's certainly a part of the long-range plan for the long-term horizon, which I believe is 2027. And by that time, you know, they will, if they submit a site plan and design review application with a further traffic analysis, it'll certainly, certainly come to bear. And as, and what, the way that the city typically handles those kinds of improvements, if they're not already part of a system development charge, is through a proportional share exaction, which is paid in at the time of development of the property. And that, that analysis is done at the time of site plan and design review.
So we're up against kind of a catch-22. If we don't annex the property and develop it, we'll never get the road improvements. And if we do, then we will.
Well, we won't get the, the jobs. And I think that's really critical is that the, I thought the layout that was in the transportation, the track report was, seems to me pretty suburban. And I'm hoping that we'll be looking at some sort of much denser, you know, employment where you have a building, but you have got a lot of people working in it. And I know right now that a lot of development that's going on is still pretty much one-story, two-story, you know, campus-like development. But then you get more intense development where people are actually using more computers with, with their employment base and things are, you know, transmitting electronically so you can have a multiple-layer building, which obviously causes less impact on the land and water and all of the other resources instead of the typical sort of spread-out thing.
But the, the density is not an issue in this proposal. That would be coming with a development plan.
Well, I agree. And they may have to do another traffic study because this is just a what-if, you know? What if they did this?
I would assume anything that we currently see being developed in the red soils district would be applicable in this zoning.
I, I hope it would be more dense than red soils, although it's, it's, it's okay.
In parts of it, yeah. The county is mixed-use employment. There is some campus industrial mixed.
That would be compliant with that zoning.
Correct.
So probably that level of development is first density or maybe somewhat higher would be a reasonable expectation.
It's, it's difficult because in, in the industrial zones, you typically don't see any minimum floor area ratio requirement in terms of a building like you do in a commercial zone typically. And I guess just to back up one step too, when they do, if they do submit for a development proposal, a more detailed transportation plan would be due at that time.
Right.
Specifically looking at their build-out period and those impacts associated with it.
Well, it, it occurs to me that at the location where that property is, the most logical place to connect would be at the intersection where the traffic signal currently exists. So I would assume that there would be an upgrade to that traffic signal to allow for four-way intersection.
Most likely.
You'd have to. You'd never be able to make that left-hand turn out of there, especially at Peak.
So I, I would assume that that would kind of be part and parcel of that development plan.
Yeah. It would most likely become a fourth leg of an intersection there with.
Fellow commissioners, the one thing that we need to remember to keep in mind is that the, the power line easement is not buildable. So the entire acreage is not going to be built out because they won't, they're not allowed to put anything underneath that.
Any structures.
Right. Any structures. So it may be, you know, maybe an opportunity for some other type of, you know, use. I wouldn't say a park per se because you don't want people under those power lines either. But maybe it's a, you know, wildlife habitat or something. It gets planted up and, you know, can be used as a corridor for critters to get back and forth across Beaver Creek Road. I don't know. But, so, you know, this drawing that's in, well, I don't know what page it's on. Pardon me, since I'm referring to that, in the transportation report.
Page nine.
Well, it looks like it's after page 17, so maybe it's 18, 19, maybe it's page 20. Has a preliminary layout and that's really, looks like the most portion of the property that's able to be developed. It's that one.
Yeah. That BPA easement is some of the, is the larger ones that we have in the city. They are the high-power, large easements. You know, you're limited to, you know, parking, maybe some stormwater management opportunities.
Joanne Fabrics is part of that lot is underneath the power line easement there off of Gaffney. And that goes, you know, that's, I think that's the same one that goes on down and across.
Clackamas Community also.
Yes.
You can also use that for year-round tanning.
Right.
Oh, yes. And a, oh, you mean electromagnetic tanning? Yes. Yes. That's a, yes. I think that could be a possible option with you wear foil on your head.
Creative.
Creative. Yes.
Are, are we done with the staff report at this point? Okay. Then are there any public testimony comments?
The applicant.
Applicant? Okay. That's right. Applicant.
Or the applicant's representative because I think the applicant is deceased.
Good evening. My name is Robert Price, P.R.I.C.E. I am the consultant to the Hawkhalter Trust and Hawkhalter family for this particular project. Pete gave an excellent rundown of the property itself and so on, so I won't go into those parts of it other than just this particular photo or map, if you will. If you envision the BPA easement and that narrow neck of land coming off of Beaver Creek Road, out of 11.9 acres, there's probably about six acres that's actually developable in this property. So it's a little limited. We're kind of hoping maybe in the future that the city might have some sort of a, a density transfer provision where one can move density off of an unbuildable area and onto something else, but that's another matter. The Hawkhalter Trust seeks annexation at this time because there's been some interest in the property. It's been for sale for quite a while, but there's been some interest. And properties on both sides along Beaver Creek Road are, are already in the city. And so we'd like to kind of round it off and finish it. And I think you had that little discussion earlier. And we, we'd like to have the property annexed for future use as campus industrial. We don't have any issue with the proposed zoning of campus industrial. It's fine for us. We're only moving a step at a time in terms of development planning for this property because we've got to see you folks, we've got to see the City Commission, then we've got to hope that the electorate agrees to annex this property. And so at this point, we're just going through the efforts of the annexation application. And once the annexation itself is approved and finalized, then we can move forward in a little bit more proactive manner on planning for this particular site. Pete did an excellent job of all his analysis of our, of our application. I think his staff report was almost as long as our application document was. It just turns out to be that way. But he did an excellent job and we agree with everything he analyzed and everything he said that was in the staff report that you folks have had a chance to review. So we really have nothing to add on that measure. We think that this will be an asset to the city, especially up in this Beaver Creek area. Early on, we had a discussion with Pete about, you know, how do we treat the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan here? It hasn't been adopted, but it's going to be, dah, 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 dah. And we just simply decided we would address the various parts of the concept plan just as if it had been approved. So that's included in our application where we looked at various parts of the, the concept plan and addressed this guideline and that criteria and so on and so forth. So it was kind of a, an effort where we weren't sure what was going to happen with the concept plan. Peter Feller was pretty sure it was going to get adopted, but don't know when, sort of thing. So throwing caution to the wind, we said, well, we'll just include it in our evaluation, our own evaluations and analysis, which we've done. I think at this point, I don't really have anything else to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I noticed Denise was a little concerned about the, the transportation planning rule. And I don't think anybody in 1973 would have ever envisioned that we were even going to have a TPR. Now we've got it and we're amending it, so on and so forth. So we had made some significant progress on our initial traffic impact analysis. And then the thing changed. It was amended. So Todd Mobley from Lancaster Engineering went back and spent some time talking with Pete about, you know, how should we do this? And so they, they agreed on how it should be done. And Todd addressed some of the criteria and the issues and so on. And Pete said, that's, that's what we wanted. So we, we've done that. One of the services, certainly sanitary sewer, is a little distance from this property. But as part, hopefully as part of the development of the Beaver Creek area, we won't be the only ones looking to extend that sewer. So, you know, we're anticipating we aren't going to pay for the whole thing, pay for our part. And the signal issue, yeah, certainly there's probably going to have to be an upgrade of that signal along there. But I think all of that is part of, of the concept plan. And we want to be part of it too. We want to be part of Oregon City. So we ask that you go along with the staff's recommendation that you recommend to the City Commission, that they review it and approve it and pass it along to the electorate. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for the applicant?
So Tony or Pete, excuse me, which one of you said that there was a, an annexation request that was withdrawn over a year ago?
No, not, not quite a year ago, but it was over this TPR issue.
Oh, okay.
And when the TPR was amended, Pete said, you know, I think you'd be better off if you did it this way, dah, 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 dah. And in order to do it that way, you've got to withdraw your application. So we withdrew the application and turned around and resubmitted it, you know, within days because we knew why we were withdrawing and what we had to do for the new submittal. So that was, that was smooth.
So this may not be totally relevant, but I'm assuming that there was a previous life estate and when the trustees, I'm assuming mother passed away, they're, now the property is going through all of that interesting family stuff and.
Still, still a trust. And Ken Hawkhalter, sitting behind me here, is still the trustee for the normal Hawkhalter Trust.
Well, I remember there was just a little old house back there on the, on the property.
Still a little house back there.
Yeah, still there. Yeah.
Hasn't been occupied for about three years, but there's still a little house there.
Somehow I remembered that when I saw this, I thought, oh, I thought it's a nice lady that lived there is what I was remembering.
There's a barn back there and a old shed. It's the kind of barn you'd like to run into and find a, a tarp and a bunch of junk covering a 1909 Hup Mobile in perfect condition.
Is there one in there?
That you could drive away and.
No. He's shaking his head. No, there's no Hup Mobile or a Model T or.
No, there's nothing in the barn.
I guess I'd just like to, to clarify what that, what, what happens when we change. So when someone submits, they're, they're, they get the code that's in place. You can't, it's called no change in the goalposts. So if someone submits and a week later, we adopt new code, they're entitled to what they submitted under, but that also works the other way.
Sure.
Where they use the code that they submitted under. We, we felt in, in talking with our attorneys that it wouldn't be appropriate to apply state rules that were adopted, that were put into place after the application was submitted. So that's why we did recommend the withdrawal and the resubmittal before we started any land use process.
Are there any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Let me ask for a moment.
Ken, do you have anything you want to say?
Okay. Good. Thank you.
That's unusual.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Are there representatives from the Neighborhood Association or any other public interest organization? None? Any individuals that want to comment? Okay. I guess we can close the public testimony.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Pete that, Pete, as I recall, when I went, last time I was down Beaver Creek Road, none of the other campus industrially zoned properties adjacent to this have developed or redeveloped at this point in time as I'm, as I'm recollecting.
Anything south of the, the storage facility.
Storage. Okay.
Storage. Yeah.
That's what I.
Which is where the sewer stops.
Right. That's what I was remembering. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. That's, thank you.
We had a conversation about police protection, I think, in the last annexation. Is that, are we still, are we still at the same place?
We did not include that in this.
As far as staffing goes or?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. You, you brought it up. Sorry, I called.
I don't know if we did or not.
Yeah. We sent it out for comment in the Police Department. They did not have any, any comments.
The Police and Fire would have an opportunity to respond to a specific development proposal, I assume.
Yes.
So at this point, there's really nothing for them to react to as far as.
It's in, it's in the Clackamas County Fire District. It'll remain in that, which is what the rest of Oregon City is in. Through our building code, we implement Clackamas County Fire District standards. They do receive a copy and are allowed, and then comment and work with our Building Division when a land use application comes in to make sure, you know, fire hydrant spacing, access requirements, sprinkle if necessary, or other methods to mitigate fire protection. So those, those all get implemented when the actual building comes in and they can review that.
As, as far as police protection, there's no change in the use of the property at this point. So there's nothing for them to really respond to.
Correct.
The annexation will be withdrawn from the Clackamas Sheriff's Department District and brought into ours.
Robert?
Well, my position is that it's applications like this that are going to keep this community growing in a healthy direction and. growing in a healthy direction, and once developed, it's going to offer employment and, and for future citizens of Oregon City. And I frankly think this is a, this is what an annexation should be. And I, I have no problems with it. I think that the problem might present itself maybe down the road, but there'll be problems that we'll address and we'll solve. But right now, I think what we have to do is just consider a good old-fashioned annexation. So that's my position.
Other comments from the commission? I, I thought one thing that Damon pointed out is that this really closes a gap in the current city limits, and it creates a contiguous area for the industrial zoning along Beaver Creek Road. And it appears to me that consistent with all the other things that I would agree with Robert, that this is an annexation that I can support.
Well, I think just to piggyback on that, I think it's important to have these properties come in so that they can participate in future construction of infrastructure. The intersections usually aren't borne on, borne by one single applicant, they're done by LID or a zone of benefit, where several applicants will pay that, that benefit from that particular service, and they won't be able to do that unless they come into the city and participate, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments? We have a motion?
I move that we approve Annexation 1203.
We have a second?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Espy, second by Commissioner Maybe.
Sure. Mahoney.
Mahoney.
Maybe Mahoney.
Mahoney, sorry, didn't catch that.
Spoke on top of each other.
Okay, second by Commissioner Mahoney to approve Annexation 1203, or recommend approval to the city commission at the August 1st hearing. I'll take the vote. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Of steam.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a couple of follow-up questions for our official chief cook and bottle washer, otherwise known as community development director.
Go for it.
We had a couple of items that you were going to check into, but not, you weren't, we didn't expect it completion, but you were going to come back and let us know what was going on with the request from the Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association. And then what was the other one? The lady that was here last time we met that had the concern about the subdivision...
Christine Kozinski.
Yes, thank you, Christine.
From Barkley Hills, so we had done some previous work in that area that Pete had put together, so we have that, you know, they never followed up with our department in terms of submitting anything to us. I think that when we left that meeting, they were going to contact us, provide us some of the information that they had. They haven't done that yet. We could certainly try and contact them and...
She's, was leaving apparently, the vice chair of their neighborhood association sent me an email saying that she was still out of town. But they were, she was thinking that there was going to be some meeting date set so that she would know when to get her stuff in, or something like that. So I said, I'll ask...
I think it'd be helpful for us if they submitted it, so we had a chance to look at it and try and process it and put it together with the information that we have, so we can bring back something that's...
What about a courtesy call to them, just a reminder that we're, we're thinking of them?
We could certainly do that, and Denise, do you want to do that, or since you have the contact?
Yeah, I know she's, I know she's still gone. I'll email Walter tomorrow and say, we are waiting on a submittal from you all, and question mark, and I'll copy you on it.
Sure.
This is the Barkley Hills?
Yes, Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association.
And the Ms. Kozinski issue?
I don't remember where we left that, it was just sort of out there.
Well, we have a continued public hearing for the variance request for the Cretury Two.
Ah, okay.
I think the request was to have that information put into the record, was that correct?
Ah, yeah, yeah. And the applicant has prepared responses to Mrs. Kozinski's comments as well, which will be part of the record that we bring to you on July 23rd, I believe, yeah.
That issue, I think, was still part of that land use decision.
Yeah.
Was the Barkley Hills going to be a study session or a work session?
It was going to work session, yes.
It was not going to be any action. As far as I know, it wasn't going to be action.
It was...
They're going to just tell us some stuff.
It was my understanding, yes.
They're going to vent.
Provide the information they put together, yes.
Actually, I've, I've been to one of their meetings, they don't really seem like the venting type. It was pretty calm.
Good.
But I was there presenting on the Rose Farm.
No, we have, I have the letter from Barkley Hills that outlined what their concerns were. And we'd already crafted some responses to a similar question, but not from Barkley Hills, so we were going to use that to help in an explanation, but we would compile that into a memorandum for, for you all.
Tony, you are going to give us some updates?
Yes, I think hopefully we have this invitation to the August 9th volunteer appreciation. It's at 5:30 at the Carnegie Library Park.
Thank you.
Hopefully, all of our commission members who dedicate so much time and energy as volunteers on our planning commission and other commissions and boards throughout the city, do have a chance to come out and receive some recognition for all that effort that we greatly appreciate. We also have the transportation system plan, where we're putting together a joint planning commission, city commission work session for an update on that transportation system plan and where we're at in that process. And right now, the date is proposed for Tuesday, August 14th. It'd probably start around 5:00, but I'll follow up once we get that time a little bit more firmed up.
That's a joint work session?
Yep, with the planning commission and the city commission, correct.
You said August 14th.
It'll be a Tuesday.
Is it summer?
Well, this is, you know, many inside of stuff. It's just, they're working. So it's just up to put in the patio.
Good luck with that.
You said 6:00?
We usually start them at 5:00, but I'll...
I wondered if it was at 6:00.
I'll, well, we can try and see what kind of time we can do on that. If 6:00 would be better.
Later would be better for me, I'm, I'm coming from downtown Portland, and Denise is too.
Yep. We're going to use our transporters and just sap ourselves.
Beam me up.
Yep. Well, you know, by now, we were supposed to have flying cars.
Yeah, right.
And moving sidewalks.
And what?
Moving sidewalks.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes, just like the Jetsons, yeah, yeah.
What else do you have first, Tony?
See what we can do about that. That's really all the updates that I have at this point.
Any news on the Blue Heron site?
That you can talk about?
He can't talk about it.
We're continuing on multiple fronts with site investigations, those are ongoing. PIC, NRI, are, are still on the site. They've moved through quite a few of the buildings, taking out whatever infrastructure that they can, kind of trying to reclaim. So that can, that's just ongoing over the summer. They're been out there five days, I think they're going to, they're going to go to a 410 or a 412, Monday through Thursday out there, probably pretty quick here, just trying to utilize, get out there a little bit more while there's some sunshine available. So that, that continues. We have our consultants out there, looking at the site, trying to get to some type of a recommendation. Our goal is to still have some, some recommendations for Metro Commission, our commission, the other partners, towards the end of the year, first of next year, trying to meet the trustees' timeline, PIC's timeline for, for the site. So we just, we're out there quite a bit. Other than that, nothing, no new bidder, no private side coming in that we're aware of. Trustees usually pretty good about open lines of communication with us if there are interests or whatnot, and we have not heard any lately.
South End concept plan update. Just about got the ink on the contract. The city commission has approved the contract, but over the break, the July 4th break, the consultant has that contract now, we just need to get the signatures back, and that will start, start the process for South End, yeah.
I, I had one question for you in Laura's absence. At the last stakeholders' meeting that I was at, one of the action items was that there was going to be a, a survey distributed regarding the assessment of the goals, because all of the goals were being weighed equally, and the conclusion of the group was that they needed to be weighed based on various valuation. I wondered if that process had moved forward.
We'll check with Laura and see where, where that's at.
The reason I ask is I think it would be useful to have that done prior to our meeting with the city commission.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
Otherwise, we'll be debating that issue during that work session.
Let me move to adjourn.
Are we done?
I don't have anything else, does anybody have any questions for me?
Nope, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I didn't, I thought that the application...
You seconded by hitting the gavel.
...was reasonable, in the industrial, but...